Greetings, everyone. Greetings, everyone.
Hello.
All right. Welcome to Calumet Public School District 132 Board of Education, July 202024. It's a 6:00 PM meeting. John, roll call.
Okay. Brown, absent, Dixon, absent, Golar, present. Kimbrough?
Present.
Love, absent, Story?
Present.
Harris?
Here. Play your flag.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda. Suggested motion, be here hereby moved that the Board of Education approve the agenda for July 2024 record session as presented. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Golar, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Story. Roll call, John?
Yes, Brown?
Here.
Dixon, absent, Golar, present. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love, absent, Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we will have brief reports from the Human Resource Department, the Academic Department, as well as Facilities. First, we will have Ms. Bates for the 2024 Summer Camp, Summer School Recap.
Good evening. So, our summer school was a success based upon having the great students attend it, but also, most importantly, having teachers who were committed to the process.
Thank you.
So, our daily routines consist of, we had 131 students registered for summer school with the average daily attendance of roughly 63%. As you know, breakfast and lunch is provided daily and family and with families within the community also had an opportunity to come for lunch. So, those areas, of course, is our focus is what we discussed before, the Math, the LA STEM and greenhouse, and our scene, which would allow us to have two in-house field trips from mobile app productions. Okay, there you go. Core content and the assessment, it basically gives you an outline of what we, what we worked on based off of data and then also the overview of the results. We again need to place a greater emphasis on, thank you, on our assessments in the area of math. There was some strong gains in our reading, but again, those who came to summer school daily were the ones who benefited the most. Our steam and our skydome planetary presentations allowed our children to have hands-on science twice during the rotation cycle with a company that came into our district. We also provided our students daily hands-on science in our, with our Maker Space Room as well as in our greenhouse. Our greenhouse has now tomatoes, cabbage, tomatoes, cabbage. What else? Zucchini, squash, yeah, you know about squash. Peppers, thank you, thank you. Yes, what else? And herbs. So, yeah, so it's coming along well. Our children had an opportunity to really test their knowledge and, and even some of our administrators got a chance to interact with our students during the STEM piece and the dome planetarium, and that was an excellent opportunity for his children to learn all about stars and looking at the solar system. So, that was a very engaging piece. We, we had an opportunity to have our children to not only, and I'm going to the greenhouse for a second, our children had an opportunity to plant and take home all their projects from the STEM, from the greenhouse, as well as from STEM. And here are some more of our pictures. Did I show that earlier?
Yeah.
Okay, there's the greenhouse. So, we also included this year for the very first time, we're going, you'll see soon, we have collard greens and we also have hostas, variety of hostas, and they're inside and outside, and the hostas are, we're doing inside and outside along with a couple of vegetable plants, so our children can see the differences in what happens on the inside versus what goes on the outside. Thank you.
Next, we will have the Summer Facilities Project Recap by Mr. Corley.
All right, good evening, Board, community, colleagues. I'm going to give a brief update on the progress that the Buildings and Grounds Department is making with our various projects that we have going on throughout the district. Let's start with Burrow Academy. We had three major projects that are going on, was scheduled for Burrow Academy this summer. Fire alarm panel upgrade, which is actually scheduled to start next week, Monday. The clock replacement is already started, actually, they're putting in infrastructure for that. Clock replacement is basi- basically getting a new clock system because the ones that we have are, were original to the building. So, a lot of them were given out and they're very expensive to replace with them being older models. And our gymnasium door replacement project as well. We're just getting new double doors that lead out to the playground because the old ones were rusting out and beginning to lose their integrity with leaks. Next, we will go over to Burrow School, which is, of course, our oldest building in the district. We had three major projects there. Breaker installation, which is for our ancil system in our kitchen, which is fire suppression for, it goes right over the stove. Lift pump replacement and the combination isolation valve, that's basically the sun pump for the school. That's what that lift pump is. It takes all of the wastewater out of the school and pumps it out to the city waste. So, those pumps were almost original to the building, so those are being replaced, and there's a check valve which limits how much water actually goes out, how much waste goes out at once. So, that's getting replaced as well in conjunction. And on to Calumet Public, which is here, the Calumet Middle School Gymnasium Edition. We're almost at substantial completion. We're moving along very, every day you walk out something new, and we're almost there, we're almost at the finish line. If you guys are driving past on a, you know, daily or weekly basis, you'll see something new on the outside. The next coming weeks, you'll see something new, the fence started going up outside around the perimeter of the addition, so that's very exciting. The Science Lab Classroom remodel, right down the hallway here, classrooms 113 and 111. The flooring, we almost had substantial completion there, flooring is going in tomorrow. Seats are in, casework is in, so once the flooring is done, that'll be complete, that should be complete by the end of next week. And also here at Calumet Middle School, additional security cameras and kitchen appliance installation. So, every, every school is getting new appliances, this building and the other two as well, and those are actually coming on Tuesday, 23rd. It was scheduled for this week, Tuesday, but it got pushed back to the 23rd. They were waiting on a few items to get it to their warehouse. And additional security cameras, of course, will make the building safer, just adding a couple of blind spots that we identified last year. We're going to cover those with a few additional security cameras here at Calumet. And that is it.
I have a question. Are there going to be more lights put around the areas, like in the corner areas around the school? Because I know some of the times the trees are kind of covering up the areas.
Yeah, I've driven past and I'd actually come in and walk through the courtyard to see if there, if we had adequate light out there right now. We base the lights to go over the doors where somebody could, you know, possibly try to, you know, intrude, you know, during off hours. So, that's where the lighting is based right now. If we see the need down the line to add some lighting, that won't be a problem. They pretty much just, they jump off of the existing lights that are there and just add it to the outside of the building. So, that's not, that's not a big thing. If we identify, we do need additional lighting.
Okay, question. For Burr Oak, you said you have to replace the doors. Is that all interior doors or going to the outside or how's that?
So, at Burrow Academy, that's two, there are two sets of double doors that lead out to the courtyard playground, so it's on the inti- it's interior, but it's leading outside to the exterior courtyard.
And those lockers, of course, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And then the clock in place with synchronization for it. How is that synchronized? Because when the time change or fall back or move forward, is that going to change with the clock?
So, we're getting a Vissiplex system, which is the same system, and it's all, it's called an atomic clock system, so it changes automatically.
Um, that's cameras in Calumet. Do we have cameras over there in the gym?
Yes.
They put it in before?
Yes.
And then another question?
Are you talking about existing?
The new gym. Locals, actually.
Yes, there definitely cameras in our gym now, and there's abundance of cameras in the new camp.
Okay. So, yeah, because I see you all was looking for the blind spots in that area. And I know this is not, maybe this is a question for Dr. Alexander. The Rain Ready project, is that in the mix anywhere, Dr. Alexander?
We actually have our kickoff meeting with Rain Ready today. Because this pro- flies and stuff. Because this project won't take place until next summer, we have a very long way to go before we start to see anything. Right now, Rain Ready is still working with their funders to do whatever they have to do as relates to funding. Mr. Corley and I talked with them today, and we have a meeting scheduled sometime in August to talk about this timeline and process, but as for now, there really hasn't been movement on the district side for Rain Ready.
I have one more question to the Corley. As far as I know, the inside of the gym, so. Oh, the, the microphones, so how does that work? How do they incom- use in the micro, the microphones, or do we have to do extra?
Are you talking about intercom system or microphone system, like for performances and things?
Yes, both.
Okay, so the intercom system is, is going to be connected to the existing, so anything that announced here on the school side, they're also here, so consider that a part of the school. So, anything, fire alarm, anything that happens on this side of the school is always, it's going to happen there as well.
Okay.
So, the system, they've been combined. Now, as far as a PA system, we're going to buy, we're purchasing a standalone PA system that we can use over, over there, take up and take down when we need it. We decided to go, go that way because it's, it's more economical and we'll have a place to actually store the things, you know, store that PA system away safely. Not, not saying that we don't have that here, but we, we definitely strapped here for, for storage, but we decided to go with a standalone system, which means we just set it up and take it down for performances.
Now, I know that when we're setting up for meetings and things like that, and sometimes the microphones go out, whatever, so are we, I mean, is the, is the technology, are those individuals, are they working with us?
So, the technology in the building, that is state of the art. The reason that we have issues here in Calumet is because it's old. It's just old technology. If I'm not mistaken, this is the original sound system.
Yes.
That came with the building 13 years ago. So, you have to think about the changes in technology, innovation, things are so much more crisp now than they were back then. So, with the new building, all of the technology is run through the walls, there's no need to redo anything. The boardroom is equipped, or the multipurpose room is equipped with its own technology, its own sound and all of that, so we, we're going to be in way better shape than we are now.
But I was just asking, so that, what I'm saying is the technology company that we have now, are they in the workings with us while we're doing now?
In part, yes. So, the, when, when you go out to bid for a project, part of the project is technology. So, you have companies that they subcontract to do it. Our technology company has to work with them to tie everything in. So, just as Mr. Corley said, essentially, think of it as just an extension of our current building. So, even though they're building this new facility, they still have to talk to our current tech people just to make sure they're tying everything in properly.
Okay, thanks.
And just, just for perspective, I'm done with this. Think of these wireless or any wireless microphone system, think of it as a cell phone. After a while, your cell phone gets old and stops working because of the frequencies and all the new digital technology. Same thing for wireless microphones. They do get old, frequencies change, the frequencies that they use, the ones that they use become outdated or they get crowded with traffic, that's why you get that cut in and cut out. That's how wireless microphone work.
All right, thank you.
And finally, we will have the SY 2425 Staffing Update by Ms. Roxanne Williams.
Are you starting, Swims, as you call their names, if they're in the room, could you have them come to phone you or after? So, you want to just hear from them?
It's all right. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'm here to do a staffing update for the 2425 school year. And so, for summer presentation. So, first, I want to welcome Dr. Armon Gasparo. And Mr. Kenyatta Greer. Dr. Gasparo is our PSBO. Holly Cosbey will be our Assistant Principal at Calumet. And Kenyatta Greer will be our Assistant Principal at Burr Oak Elementary School. So, did you want to say something to them or is he?
Just, they can introduce themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Armon Gasparo. You can call me Arby if you'd like, that's my nickname. Very excited to be here. I've had the opportunity over the last two weeks to get to know all the administrators and the team, and I can't tell you how impressed I am with, with everybody and everyone's dedication. So, I'm really excited to be here, ready to get to work, and looking forward to meeting everybody and working with the Board of Education. So, thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Holly Cosbey, and as you know, I'm the new AP at the middle school here. Mr. Ivy and I have been working hard on looking at our data and talking about how we're going to move forward with this school year, so we are definitely working well together, and I look forward to keeping that up.
Good evening. My name is Kenyatta Greer. I'm the new AP at Burr Oak Elementary. This is my 17th year in education and my eighth year as an administrator, so I'm looking forward to getting to know everyone and working with you all, and thank you for the opportunity.
As you go to your seat, I want to say personally, thank you guys for choosing our district. I knew we couldn't wait anywhere else, but you believed in us enough to come here and in us your expertise and your knowledge, so I'm grateful, and I thank you for your commitment to us and looking forward to wanting to be here working with you guys. And additionally, I want to congratulate our people that we have here, our staff that we have already, Mr. David Drouin. And Mr. Neil Wilson's out today, and Ms. Andrew Brown. And Mr. Brian Ivy. So, I'm confident that this school year will be even more remarkable and filled with lots and lots of accomplishments. So, my next slide will talk about building vacancies. Right now, we have nine building vacancies, and we also have three district vacancies. We are working to fill these positions. The plan that we're doing is. Word of mouth, I'm sorry, word of mouth, social media and job boards. We are continually looking and interviewing. They do, we are looking, and to fill these positions. So, if you know anybody, anybody in the audience, know if anybody that's credentialed that can do it, please send them my way. Also, our international teachers, so good thing is their licenses have been issued, the visa dates have been issued, and also they have arrival dates. So, right now, P R B A staff, I meet with them weekly for updates on their arrivals, their licenses, as they work with N D as well. Also, the staff is actually here in this area, talking to landlords for housing for our international students, teachers, I'm sorry. And so, again, once they get here, we have in place district mentoring for our international teachers, and also they will have additional services specifically for them. So, we are excited about them coming, they are excited as well. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Add one thing, Board. I am very excited about the work that the HR department has done in the last few months from developing a recruiting, a recruitment and hiring plan to really executing it. Although we are in the midst of a teacher shortage, we still continue very diligently to find teachers. And I'll tell you this, finding the best teachers, we've had some teachers who've come our way who not going to touch them. And in the past, I mean, just because a teacher had a hard beat, a driver's license and a teacher certificate, they got a job. But the reality is that that hurts your students, and so we have to move away from that practice. So, we do have a cadre of longtime subs who've been with us for a while, who we will call upon to get us to the school year and through it. We are continuing to look for teachers. Everywhere I go, I'm talking about it, it's posted on my social media. But unfortunately, across the state of Illinois, we're all having these issues. So, kudos to Roxanne, the academic team, the principal team, they all have been humping to really make this come to fruition.
Dr. Alexander, real quick, special, could you explain a special education teacher? We do not have a self-contained, so are they pushing with the teachers? Are they co-teaching or?
Sure, depending on what the kid IAP says, so most of it is co-teaching where the resource teacher pushes in, but some of the kids get pulled out. So, we are looking to move to a self-contained model. One of the biggest issues is finding a teacher. And so, at this point, we are continuing with the push in and pull out as needed or as dictated by the IAP.
So, is it, is it the resource teacher we're looking for or this?
So, it's the, we only have resource teachers in our district. They're especially at teachers.
Yes.
But they teach a resource style of teaching. It's not self-contained as of yet.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, considered agenda items. Be here hereby moved that the Board of Education approve the considered agenda items. A, B, C, D, and E as presented. May I have a motion? Motion by, I'm sorry? Ms. Kimbrough? May I have a second?
We have to do the motion before we take a discussion, but we want a full seat.
Okay, so. We want a table, letter C.
It wasn't second, though.
It wasn't second. Can we take something out? So, we can table, letter C.
We have to kill the motion, says the one second.
So. So, you want to pull back your, the motion?
Yes, please.
So, we want a table, letter C. C1, I'm sorry. We have a motion to approve. Personnel, letter A.
A, B, D, and E.
Are that's, is that it? Okay, so we're proving letter A, B, D, E. Motion by Mr. Golar?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any question? Question? Roll call, John.
Brown?
Yes.
Dixon, absent, Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough? Love, absent, Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Items A, B, D, and E, carry.
Number seven. So, letter C, six, C, C1. Approval of school year 2024-2025 School Improvement Plan for Burr Oak School and Calumet Middle School.
So, a question about this. So, the School Improvement Plan, I read it and it was supposed to be 2425, so some of the dates are incorrect. It says 23. And then when you're supposed to have a person who's going to actually monitor or who's in over it, though some of those are blank. So, a new of that, just we need to update the School Improvement Plan. You know, something came wrong?
Yeah, that was the same issue. And there were some, like you said, some questions that weren't responded to there and in terms of beginning dates only and no like end date, if it's 2026. Also, alignment, I found some alignment issues as well. So, I just kind of want to relook at that. And are we with the I-ready materials or using I-ready?
So, I, I sent that out yesterday to the Board. That was an error from the previous one, so I'm wondering if you all.
No, I still saw the new one.
In the new one, all right. So, I, I will have this revisi- so, the School Improvement Plan is written by the district team, I'm sorry, let me rephrase it because it's not the district team, the building team and the school improvement consultant from ISB. So, the state has approved this, so I need to go back through it with them. Mr. Corley, I'll give this flight. The state has already approved it, so I'll go back with them just to make those minor corrections before it's resubmitted. But everything else substantially was approved by the state. Yeah. But thank you all so much for catching that. Once the state said it was approved, I didn't touch it again either, so I didn't catch that either, so thank you for that.
What about the other school? Was that in here or they working on it? We have Burr Oak.
Both of them are here, Burr Oak and.
What about a, a local, I mean, in the school itself, the School Improvement Plan? For who we missing? Yeah, Burr Oak.
It's only for Burr Oak and Calumet.
Okay, but do we have a School Improvement Plan for that guy?
So, no, because, let me, let me rephrase that. This School Improvement Plan, no, we don't. This is only for schools that are in School Improvement status based on designations. So, because Burr Oak Elementary, I'm sorry, Burr Academy is not rated, they don't get a School Improvement Plan.
Well, how can we plan ahead to improve our school if we don't have a School Improvement Plan? I do understand with the state, because we're in that status with the state, but we still need something, a school improvement.
How we gonna, what we gonna do? Are we using dibbles? Are we using A M S W A with, with, with assessment?
We do that and we craft that locally. This is something totally different.
So are we working, I remember.
Yeah, that's.
So we're working towards a school improvement plan for Burr Oak Academy.
Yes, so outside of this plan, every school has their plan. So the school improvement plan is specific to certain data points and certain, certain metrics, what are, which are aligned to your designation. So this is not a total snapshot of what's going on in the school, how and why. This is just for compliance for the grant sake. But to your question, yes, we do have plans, uh, and every principal and, um, what do you call, so this is the school improvement team, your structural leadership team, they have plans as well. And they communicate that with academic services and that's what we monitor throughout the year. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So may I have a motion? Or are you going to disable this?
We have to table it, we have to fix the correction.
Okay.
So the, uh, so the corrections, I mean, the corrections are grammatical, so we can fix that. Approving, the state has already approved it. So, um, the, the last part of us receiving our grant for us is that the board has to accept it. So we, we can fix the grammatical issues and resubmit it to the board, but it's already been substantially approved by the state. The language, the data and the targets, that's already been accepted by the state. Now we just have to refix these errors that you found.
I think some errors weren't exactly grammatical that, that I kind of found, uh, in terms of, like, there was a question in the key activity section that was not responded to in terms of, um, who was responsible for monitoring. Let me see, that would be page, um, page six. I don't have the. Page six for, um, Calumet, is it, uh, the third through fifth grade building?
That's Burr Oak. So that should be the first one?
Yeah, so. And then I, and I had a question about a couple other, uh, pieces that I kind of glanced at, but they weren't grammatical.
If, if you have, if you have specific questions, uh, I don't want to change this plan because this was written with the state consultant, which they already accepted that portion. So I don't want to change anything, which changed the overall plan. But if you have specific questions, then we can definitely look into that with them. Okay?
So we, so we're gonna go, uh, bring it back in August? A meeting? Okay. Alright. Moving on to item, action item, approval to adopt twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, five district budget. Being hereby moved that the Board of Education approved the adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, five district budget as presented. May I have a motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Story. Question?
I guess again, we're gonna go, no. Uh, for the reasons I said, the last, last month and have consistently for the last three years about our allocation of resources to the board. Uh, so this would be on record if I haven't said that.
Alright, thanks. Roll call, John.
Is Brown?
No.
Dixon, absent, Golar?
Yes.
Alright. Kimbrough?
Alan.
Love, absent, Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion fail.
Approval of Eisenhower Co-op Facilities Agreement. Suggested motion being hereby moved that the Board of Education approved the Eisenhower Co-op Facilities Agreement in the amount of two million, two hundred and five thousand? Wait. Two million, two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and six dollars as presented. Motion by Mr. Golar?
Second.
Second by Ms., um, Brown. Question?
Question.
I thought, I was saying, I'm looking, because I thought it was like a million or something, over fifteen years, I'm looking, trying to find that. It was over a million, right?
One second.
Yeah, I'm looking too, because I, because when I'm right. Because I found too many. I know it was over a span of fifteen years and I do know we, we need it.
It's, that's, that's the correct price, two point two million right here. That's the correct, so. So all the years, that's the price there.
Is that, oh, like, that's the fifteen years?
Yes, so from twenty-two, twenty-five down to twenty-thirty-nine, that's it.
So we, so what, how much we pay overall?
That, that's what we're going to pay overall.
Year?
No, this is a year, so every year, so twenty-two, twenty-five, a hundred forty-seven, that's what the payment is. Yeah.
So it's just broken down with two shoulders?
Broken down, correct. But that's the, the total number.
Roll, uh, roll call, John.
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon, absent, Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love, absent, Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Approval of emergency campus security contract. Suggested motion being hereby moved that the Board of Education approves the emergency agreement with Benford Protection Group to provide campus monitoring and security services for the district at the anticipated cost of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents for the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, five school year as presented. Um, I'm gonna say we're gonna have to table this. So we're gonna table this, okay?
So just understand that if you table this, we will not have security on the first day of school.
That's fine, we'll table this, we'll come back to it. Um, and what I, what I believe that we should do is go back out to bid. So from this point, um, starting, what, Monday, or as soon as possible, put this out back to bid.
So, if that's the, the directive of the board, then I would need consensus to do that. And the reason I'm saying that is because we're, technically, we've been compromised. We've been compromised because we just went to bid. The exact same companies are going to bid again and they're gonna play the numbers game. So, uh, that was the reason that the recommendation was made to, uh, go back for a one-year emergency contract. Um, so whatever the will of the board is, but just understand that we've been compromised because we've already published the bid, the exact same companies are going to bid again. Um, and the same company could bid again with the lowest bid and it could be two hundred thousand dollars unless they automatically win and we're back in the same spot.
So what I'm gonna say is that, uh, we're gonna, um, speak with the attorney, okay, on this. Um, unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here, but, uh, this is regarding this.
So we've had con, we had conversation, you and I did, with the attorney, uh, right after the board meeting. And the response pretty much was the same. Um, and so if you remember, security services was basically purchased as an emergency the first time, because the district didn't go out to bid.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm all for the bid process because that's what follows the state procurement law. I just think we put ourselves in a very bad position as a district going back out to bid for the exact same bid. And then if we put an exclusion in the bid, which I have seen, that says if you bid it the first time, you can't bid again, then we probably won't get any, um, applications.
So, uh, what I would suggest is that we have a conversation, um, after the meeting with the attorney.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna table this and then we're gonna come back and follow through, follow up with, uh, the attorney.
So what is the preliminary plan then? Because at this point, we don't.
We will talk about it and if maybe, we will have a, um, um, emergency meeting.
Okay, no problem.
Alright. Um, so we're gonna take this. Moving on to, um, public comments.
Do you have any comments tonight?
No.
Very good. New business, any for you, John?
None, since the last meeting. No voice, since the last meeting.
Any board reports?
No board reports, uh, congratulations on summer school, welcome new, uh, new hires. Uh, those who were shuffled, um, I am really excited to see what we can cook up this semester and I'm excited that we are growing color crates. So, thank you, I hope you all have a great summer, um, and looking forward to a fantastic school year.
I just want to say, congratulations, welcome aboard to School District One Thirty-two. We are excited that we will do, um, great things. I'm not gonna say make it great again, but we'll do great things in District One Thirty-two. I'm excited because the gym is coming along and, um, and the greenhouse, um, I'm excited about that. And I could just imagine to look at those, um, kids' faces, wow, look at this, what is this, what is that? And all the questions they may have about the greenhouse. But I am excited for this, um, next school year for school year. So, um, kudos to all the principals and all the A Ps and our C S B O, yay! And, um, so kudos to all of you and all, and welcome, welcome aboard.
I will say ditto, ditto, ditto. Welcome, uh, congratulations to those, um, principals and A Ps and again, welcome to our new C S B O. And, um, you know, you guys keep working hard because that's what you do and that's what you do.
So I'm gonna repeat after these ladies what they stated. Um, I'm so, uh, glad that we have a new, uh, Chief Business Officer. We have some new assistant principals joining our family. Um, I hope that the su, the rest of your summer is pretty cool. Um, glad to see Mr. Drow, Mr. Olat, Ms. Brown, Mr. Ivy over there in the cut, it's okay. Uh, Mr. Corley, always glad to see you guys, Ms. Bates and, and Dr. Stevenson and so forth. And, uh, Dr. Burped and Ms. Washington and Ms. Roxanne, I'm gonna go through everybody. And the new assistant principal, now you're gonna have to help me with your last name.
Okay, you wanna try it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I think you're gonna have to give me some help.
Coste. Coste Bate.
Coste Bate.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm playing Ms. Coste Bate. Okay, well, listen, uh, wel- welcome you, uh, guys and we hope that you guys have a fantastic, uh, school year, uh, of a school year. Um, I just wanted to mention, uh, I'm always doing this, uh, talking about my daughter again. She is a wildland firefighter and she is in Idaho. And at this point, she is fighting fires. So, yeah, so I just wanted to let you know, one of our, uh, children here that born and raised here, she is, um, making Calumet Park, uh, very proud. That's all I wanted to say.
And I just wanted to add that, uh, I just learned that the city chancellor, chancellor of City College is, is a product of the Calumet Park School District as well.
Oh, okay, well, very good. Very good. And I, I hope to see everybody on the ribbon cutting, I'm, I'm really excited to, I promise, I, I really am, so, okay, that's all.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say, congratulations to everybody, me, myself, I look forward to spending more time and seeing you guys more. Sorry about some of my absences, but I don't know, business to it with manpower shortages and everything going on. I will stand and post a lot of times, so I look forward to being more involved with the board and knowing you by name and not just by face. Congratulations to everybody.
Okay, um.
I'm still waiting for Ms. Harris to recognize me, so.
Oh, my God, John!
Mr. Chop Liver.
John!
Please forgive me.
I look forward to seeing you board.
Oh, my God, I'm sorry. Okay, that was, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just see you can text best.
Okay, uh, so we don't have closed session. So, and I wanted to say, uh, everyone, we hope to see you later in a minute, uh, to kind of like meet and greet, okay? Look forward to that. Uh, may I have a motion to close, please?
So move.
Move by Ms. Story, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Story, I'm, I mean, uh, Ms. Brown. Roll call, John.
Is Brown?
Yes.
Dixon, absent, Golar?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love, absent, Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carry at six forty-six P M.
Woo-hoo, that's a.
Uh, that's a, that's a record, record, okay?